Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 3rd, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. And I will now call the meeting to order, and if you will, join me in our, as we have a prayer. Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you, asking forgiveness of all of our transgressions. Also, we're thanking you for all of the many, many blessings you've allowed us to, to have, and the achievements that this young team, this young soccer team has achieved. We thank you for all that they've done. May it be, may what we do tonight be pleasing in your eye, and may you guide us as we conduct business for the Granville County. In Jesus' name, amen. If you will now stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, are there any, any adjustments or changes to the agenda that we need to make? I see we have one under section nine with the board's permission. I'd like to move that to the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion we move that to consent agenda.
Second motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. As have it, motion carries. And now we move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move chairman.
Go ahead.
Move chairman, I'll motion that we, the agenda be approved.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. As have it, motion carries. Now to our introductions, recognitions, and presentations, and we have a proclamation recognizing Buttonless St. Middle School Boys Soccer. And if you will, come down and join me on stage. Congratulations. Yes, congratulations. 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 And most of all, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I don't need to be standing in front of y'all. I need to be standing behind you because you guys are the stars tonight. Thank you. Thank you for being here. This is a, okay, this is a proclamation recognizing Buttonless St. Middle School Boys Soccer Team for winning the 2024 Middle School Athletic Conference MAC-10 Championship. Whereas the Buttonless St. Middle School Boys Soccer Team has demonstrated outstanding dedication, teamwork, and sportsmanship throughout the 2024 season, and whereas, under the leadership of head coach Ed Sosa and assistant coaches.
Melissa.
Melissa and Salvatore Jr., the team secured the 2024 Middle School Athletic Conference MAC-10 Championship title, bringing pride and recognition to their school and the Granville County community. And whereas Principal Ashley Clark has provided steadfast leadership and support for the team, fostering a culture of excellence both in academics and athletics at Buttonless St. Middle School, and whereas the players guided by their coaches and supported by their principal, families, teachers, and school staff exhibited hard work and determination both on and off the field, and whereas this remarkable achievement reflects not only their athletic ability, but also their discipline, character, and perseverance in achieving excellence, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wishes to formally recognize and commend the Buttonless St. Middle School Boys Soccer Team for their exceptional accomplishment. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Granville County Board of Commissioners does hereby congratulate the Buttonless St. Middle School Boys Soccer Team on winning the 2024 Middle School Athletic Conference MAC-10 Championship and commends them for their dedication and success this third day of March, 2025. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you. Can I say anything? Do you want to make a few comments?
Well, this is their recognition. I appreciate the commissioners for their standing job also, and for me, it's team, teamwork. We lost the first two games. We made arrangements, and they communicate well. They didn't give up, that's the main thing. It's not only playing soccer, it's also be a mentor. I'm a father for them, and they believe in me, they believe in themselves. It's just the main thing here. Life goes on, you're gonna go to night grade, and that's a good experience here. Keep it up, never give up. I know you can do it. Thank you. Good night.
And here's your proclamation. Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, and we want to share it with all of your team. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You with me here?
Yes.
You just hold it like this, and we smile. It's smiling.
Where? There, everywhere. Which one? Thank you.
And we're gonna have another meeting. We'll call it that later. I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Let's keep it. Great job. Great job. Thank you all. And now we have a presentation from Franklin Granville Vance Smart Start. Dr. Linda Frederickson, thank you for coming tonight, and please proceed.
Got it? Thank you. County manager, leaders, it's an honor to be here tonight representing Franklin Granville Vance Smart Start. We're gonna get started. I know that you have a lot on your agenda, so I'm gonna try to go through this as quickly as possible, just to share some great news and to say thank you to you. One thing I want to make sure, when I first started working with Franklin Granville Vance Smart Start after retiring with the public school system for many years, I found out that a lot of people say, yes, I know all about you. You're, you know, you're Head Start, you're the Franklin Granville Vance Warren Opportunities, you're a childcare center, you're, you know, but, so I want you, if you don't remember any other slide tonight, to remember what we're not. We're not those. We work with those. They're great, but that's not who Smart Start is. So I want you to make sure you know that. I had sat with somebody at a great banquet last week, and they said, oh, I didn't, I haven't seen you, but your office is right near us. And I'm like, no, that, because I know it sounds Smart Start and Head Start, but that's how it goes, but we do collaborate. Okay? And who we are, we are part of a 75 local partnerships that represent all the counties in the state of North Carolina, and we work for programs for children, families, five and under. And we represent three counties. So some places they have one county, well, we have three, and we work hard to represent those three well. So you will see that, I'm not gonna go through every little thing on your slide, because you have those, and I think you've had those in advance, because I saw that those were out there. But one of the key things is, is you make a lot of decisions. You're gonna be making a lot of decisions and discussions, and hearing a lot tonight about things that have to do with, you know, taxes and education and the fire department and the police department, but everything we do, we need to remember that our youngest citizens, they can't get up here and sign up to speak. There's things that they can't do, so we must represent and be for them. And did you know, and I'm not gonna ask any of your age, but I'll proudly tell you that I turned 62 this past week, and, but our brain develops the fastest and the most from birth to age three. So what are we giving to our children, birth to age three? So Franklin Granville Vance gives a lot, and your support helps. So we have accessing higher education, where we help our teachers that are in the classroom continue to get the training they need. We have added a behavior support specialist. This behavior support specialist is not to fix kids or diagnose kids, it's actually to work with the adults that work with children, to let them know that they need to know and understand their children. And so we work with those. We've added a childcare health consultant that works and makes sure that they work with the programs for our kids. We refer to quality services. We make sure that we help the childcare centers, that if they are what's called a three star, we want them all to be five stars, we help them to get there. And again, we are not a for-profit organization. Most of our money comes from state and local, and a very small amount from federal. So I want to tell you, again, I think I've already emphasized the brain development of our children. It's the fastest rate of brain development. That's when we should be not sticking them, you know, in front of, giving them a little electronic device. We need to be reading with them, teaching them words, just as they don't wait till they're five years old to feed them the first time, right? To eat? They wouldn't make it to that. Well, we can't do that if we want them to be successful in school either. We have an adolescent parenting program that helps young people. Sometimes that happens in middle and high school. We have young people that, you know, they have babies, but we work with them to help them graduate, to teach them to be the best parents they can be, and to try to prevent a second pregnancy until they are ready. Okay. Now, another one you see, now, you're the third county I've been to, but Dolly Parton has changed this program. I mean, not she hasn't, but Dolly's the same. I think she's been the same always. She doesn't change at all. But there's a reading program, and over a thousand families in Granville County take part in this program. And it's been provided the last few years by the state free. Any child, regardless of, you know, social economics, gender, any of that, could get a book from age birth to five to the month they turn five for free. Well, as of February 1st, the state allotted money for that has ceased, and they're working on continuing it, but if you are already in the program, it will continue. But guess what? We know reading is important for Granville County, and we're gonna continue that. And so I'm looking at grants, I'm writing grants, I've written several already, I'm asking, pleading, I'm not doing that with you tonight, but it's something to think about. Family engagement is the key, getting our families engaged. So we have centers at different locations. We have one in Franklin County, one in Henderson, and then we have one right here at, on the campus of the Masonic Home for Children in Oxford. You, if you have grandchildren, children, nieces, nephews, birth to five, you could go check out quality, developmentally appropriate resources for them, not just books, hands-on manipulatives, and you can check those out for up to a month free and return them. I'm clicking, but either I've clicked too fast or it's not going. I'm gonna keep rolling, so, oops, it finally caught up with me. I might have skipped a few, but we have a kindergarten transitions program that helps families make sure that their children are ready for kindergarten. We have a supporting, well, Popped Up Parents as teachers. The first teachers, who are the first teachers? The parents. We actually go in and help those parents be the best teachers they can be. We have a supporting father involvement, because fathers are very, very important. Moms, you know, always, we always think about, oh, moms do, and boy, I wouldn't have made it without my mom, but having an active, engaging father or father figure is extremely important, so we work with that. Little Free Libraries in Granville County, they're over at the athletic park. I'll let you read where we get our money, but I told you that most of it comes from state funds. You see the amount, $2,782.88, only a 585 come from federal grant funds. And other income, we get out there with our events, and I'll tell you a little bit about those in a few moments. One, I'm so excited, and Will Robertson, I'm glad you're here, and I'm gonna point you out. The PBS TV, how many of you remember things like Sesame Street, or Zoom, or the Electric Company? That stuff, they have so much nailed that's out there, and, and what they want to do is have ambassadors from all 100 counties. So I am your Granville County ambassador. Actually, and your packet, if you get it by email, there's a link in there, you can link and see a little 45-second video that I did with PBS TV. But the reason I said Will is this is something I work very closely with the library system with, and he actually kind of somehow got my name in that pot. So I'm, you know, Will, I'm gonna give you the credit, and then I'm gonna come to you when I need some help. But it's a trusted brand. It has programs for kids, Spanish, English activities, free downloads, and if you're gonna watch TV, they need to do something that's good and learning. So our local fundraising event, Timeout Tuesday, you might recognize some faces up there, and Ducky Derby are two of our events. So on Tuesday, during the Week of the Young Child, we will be having a Timeout Tuesday here in Granville County, and if you would like to be put in timeout, or you would like to pay to get somebody out of timeout, or just support us, because we have a good time with it. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna try to have a good time. And then our Ducky Derby. So right now, we, what do you, why am I here? I'm here to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You helped, the funds you give us, $5,000, some places might say, $5,000? It does a lot for a group like us, and we appreciate it. Week of the Young Child activities, staff trainings, and educational materials. Thank you, and I have left some goodies for you. I want to make sure you get a little character from Sesame Street. I think our clerk has them back there, there's enough for everyone, and if you don't want it, make sure you take it to one of your family members, because they're gonna want it. These are hot items, okay? When I go places, everybody wants their little Bert and Ernie and all of that. So I've left my business cards and other information. I apologize for speaking so fast, but I want you to get into your business, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, you'll have my information, but if you really want to know everything, check with my executive director, Dr. Tony Kozart. Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Frederickson. Dr. Kozart, do you have some comments?
Yes, just want to thank Dr. Frederickson for coming tonight and sharing the information. This is something we have been talking about doing for a number of years, so I'm so happy that she could come tonight and give you this information. And I also want to say thank you. It has been a real pleasure to be able to try to meet the needs of our youngest among us. And one of the things that you will hear us talking about a lot going forward is to try to see if we can reach out and really serve those children in our communities who are not attending a childcare center. We're very concerned about those children, because as they go to kindergarten, if they don't have that experience, they will start off at a deficit, and we all know that is not good. So thank you for your support. With the size of our budget, you might say, why are we thanking so much? Most of our money comes, and it is, it is targeted and streamlined, that's how we have to spend it. The money you give us gives us flexibility, so we're so thankful. Thank you again, Dr. Frederickson. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your comments, Dr. Kozart. We appreciate it. And our next is a presentation of the Granville Vance Public Health 50th Anniversary Annual Report. How you doing, Ms. Lisa?
I am great. Thank you for having me, Commissioner Gooch, and commissioners of the Granville County Board. We really also want to echo Dr. Frederickson's thank you. It is always nice to have partners in the community who work with children and families. And Granville Vance Public Health thanks you for the work that we are able to do in our community, and wanted to just share briefly some of the highlights from our most recent report. Can you hear me okay? All right. And, and I think I've got a stack of them that should be coming around, hopefully, yeah. Do you have enough? They're great. Thanks. So, yes, lots of good things turned 50 this year, or in 2024, and Granville Vance Public Health was one of those. So in our report, we are required, on the years that we don't do a community health assessment full-blown event, that we give a state-of-the-county health report to our community leaders, and make sure that we produce and print opportunities for others in the community to be able to read through some of the community health priorities and the progress that we've made on them. So our priorities over time have, over the last three community health assessment years have been mental health and substance use treatment, making sure that we're having access to care, and safety and youth issues. So some of the historical reflections are included, and what you've had over the last 50 years, and these two counties working together as a district are highlighted. And then most recently, our achievements in 2023 are that we've had the expansion of school-based oral health programs, we've had recognition and excellence for breastfeeding support and high-risk pregnancy care through state awards with our Women Infant Children Supplemental Nutrition Program, maternal health and child health, and we've had the launch of our Thrive program in schools, providing mental health, behavioral health interventions. It's a $4 million initiative over four years, and so far, knock on wood, HERSA has continued to fund that. I know there's a lot of concern about cuts at the federal level. We did get a confirmation just earlier today that HERSA will continue to fund that through next year, so that is great news. Our vision for the future is that we remain committed to fostering integrated whole community health through partnerships, innovation, and evidence-based care, and this year's state-of-the-county health report underscores resilience, adaptability, and dedication of staff and community partners to make that mission possible. So you'll see in the presentation, an overview of whole person and whole community care, and our view of wanting to have a no-wrong-door approach to always be able to lead to the work that we do. Again, the CHOP priorities in the last year are access to healthcare, mental health, substance use disorder, and engaging youth for community health and safety, and lots of programs that we provide at the Health Department address all of those needs. When we decide to write grants for any supplemental funding for our staffing needs, this is our North Star. This is what our community have said they want us to work on, and so this is the, the effort that we get funding for. And then the other thing that's required in a state-of-the-county health report are our top reasons that we need to look at for leading causes of death and interventions that we can provide to reduce those causes of death and the morbidity associated with them. So you'll see the data for Granville County. Leading causes of death include cancer, diseases of the heart, cardiovascular and cerebrovascular disease, chronic lower respiratory diseases, and for 2023, 2022, and prior, since we had a pandemic going on, we also had COVID-19 as one of the top reasons for death in our two counties, Granville and Vance, and you can see the comparison across those two counties. And you can see the rates per 100,000 people in those two counties as well. And then we also include in our state-of-the-county health reported data snapshot, population characteristics, different connections to Hispanic, non-Hispanic, Black, African, White, all American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Asian populations. Sometimes there are disparities in more disease burden in some communities than in others. Diabetes is one of those. We see a tremendous issue with, in both of our communities, so we have diabetes programs around that. And then we have emerging issues that we went through for the future. We want to make sure we're addressing housing and food insecurity, which are big issues that determine the health outcomes of our population. We've been working on that. And I also wanted to share something as recent as last Friday. An emerging issue is that we have a lot of screening to do and treatment to do for viral hepatitis C. So that is an inflammation of the liver. It's often caused by a virus, and most common types of those, other than C, are hepatitis A and B as well. And in, just last Friday, in one day, we screened 15 different people. Nine of those 15 people were positive for hepatitis C, seven received Narcan kits, 15 received harm reduction kits, and all received counseling. So we're trying to really focus in on the populations of need, those over age 50, so we're on a 50th anniversary report, and lots of people have had potential exposure to this virus and need to make sure their liver is healthy. So we offer that screening and treatment in the Health Department, and look forward to working with our, our different initiatives around mental health and substance use treatment to ensure that we address all of those risks and get people treated. It's an expensive treatment, but we do have state funding to be able to help with that. So those are just some brief highlights. The last two pictures are the wonderful people doing the work at your local health department. We have approximately 100 people who do the work of public health across two counties, six buildings, and lots and lots of different types of work in public health, environmental health, communicable disease, vital records. We have primary care, we have behavioral health and integrated care. We have a lot of people doing really important work to keep our community healthy, and that's our leadership team, making a lot of great things happen across different funding sources and across different departments. So thank you for the time to allow me to come just give you a state-of-the-county health report and provide you with this highlight and overview of the progress we've made over 50 years. I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Good evening, Ms. Harrison. How are you?
Hi, I'm great.
Good.
Thank you.
Talk to me a little bit about your state and federal contracts and funding, and, and what, if any pauses at this point?
Yes, that's a great question. So far, we have not received any word that we have any cutbacks directly related to any of our staff or our, our particular services. We do have a hepatitis C bridge counselor who is only funded through this fiscal year, and CDC has notified us that that program will be cut at the federal level. And after this fiscal year, we will no longer have the $37,000 worth of funding for that. We are hoping to find another grant by the time that ends, so at least we have a little bit of a timeline on that. I do look to our March 15th deadline at the federal level for continuing resolution in the funding of the federal government to sort of tell us a little bit more about their decisions around Medicaid. I think it's really important that people understand that Medicaid pays for services, doesn't pay people directly, so our local hospital, our health department, our federally-qualified health center, a lot of our programs and services and people who have jobs in our local communities depend on the Medicaid program, so that we're providing services with those dollars. So I know there's a lot of advocacy going on from the Hospital Association and other places, keeping my fingers crossed that we will continue to see Medicaid patients.
So if you could, could you, for us and for the public, in a real short line, or the Medicaid program was in jeopardy with funding, and how that translates to what our state is doing as well?
Oh, goodness. I, I don't know the numbers of billions of dollars the state of North Carolina receives from Medicaid. I can tell you, in our local health department, there are three ways we receive money from Medicaid. Fee for services, that people coming in and need a service, they need hepatitis C treatment, for example, and we screen and treat them. Medicaid is where we bill. It's an insurance company we bill to, so it helps pay the bills at the Health Department. The second way is through cost settlement, and so they understand at the federal and the state level that serving populations who need assistance take some extra work from our doctors and our nurses, and so at the end of the year, if we've put forth effort and proven our time sheets have said we're serving 2,000 Medicaid patients for these services, they will settle up with us and say, we don't need to go in the red for that, because they understand we're serving people who are uninsured and have Medicaid. The third way is there's something called per member per month for care management of people who are pregnant and who are zero to five. So our young children and our pregnant women get care management services from nurses and social workers, and Medicaid pays us for those services. So it covers approximately 37 positions in our health department locally in Henderson and in Oxford, for us to be able to bill Medicaid in the one of those three ways for those kinds of services to serve our community.
So if I'm correct, based on some federal government decisions, it will depend upon what our state also does to cover that cost, because it's a shared cost.
It is a shared cost.
And so when that occurs, it's, it impacts us locally.
Yes.
And what are, what are your, what's your sense with that?
It impacts jobs.
What, yeah, what's your sense with that?
I have really little to go on on guessing. I think one of the things I'm hearing and reading is that there will be work requirements for eligibility that, that will be negotiated. My guess is there will still be cuts to Medicaid, and until- Um, and until we know which specific programs or what kind of reimbursement rates might decrease, it's just hard to tell. The Dental Association is actually asking for increased rates because they haven't had increased rates for dental care in Medicaid since 2008. And that bill in the state of North Carolina is going through, um, the process now of, of potentially passing. So it, it's an interesting combination of things happening and it's hard to, to read the tea leaves quite yet.
And, and our board, we met with Social Services during their retreat and 27% of our population is, is served by Medicaid. As to cancer, um, the cancer rates in Granville County, not, not Vance County, uh, not that I don't care about Vance County, but I care more about my county.
Right.
Uh, what do they contribute to?
Um, there are a lot of things that cancer rates are contributed to, and a lot of the history in these two counties of being a tobacco-growing region is one of the things that pops out for environment. We also have a number of different types of cancers that are in there, so that's, that's all types. Um, and, and definitely the rates are, are in line with other counties. You can see Vance County actually has a bit of a higher rate than Granville County. Um, but, but people are always concerned. I always get calls and emails and requests for, for, for people to understand a little bit more about our cancer registry at the State Center for Health Statistics. And I'm used to putting people in touch with a little bit more data and information about different types of cancer.
But what you're seeing is really a more trend along lines of, of healthy choices and lifestyle, um, that may, may be driving some of the rates.
That always is a consideration, certainly, yes. Nature and nurture, um, all, all combined there. It's hard, it's hard to tease those apart sometimes without big, big studies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. Has anyone else got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, um, Mrs. Harrison, thank you too. You, uh, former board member at Smart Start, thank you for that. And I get around to a lot of inter-agency meetings, and I just want to commend you. Your team is at the table all throughout this community, and I really do appreciate that. They have been at our call for things where we could partner. That has been very important to us, allowed us to be able to leverage the resources we have. So thank you for that. And also on page seven, I just wanted to note how important the expanded dental services, how wonderful that is, and just thanks to you and your team for being able to make such a needed service available in our counties.
Excellent, yes. Carolina Fellow's Family Dentistry up at Hilltop Village is, um, wonderful and we are glad to serve, and hopefully those Medicaid rates will stay in place and maybe even increase for dental services.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I'd like to, just like to say, thank you, Lisa. We have the best director in the state of North Carolina, working both for us. Yet young lady keeps up with everything that's going on statewide and nationwide. We have the best. Just like to say that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your service on the Board of Health. And thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you. Has anyone else got any comments? I'd just like to say thank you for all that you do outside of your job. Thank you for what you do within your job, but also what you do outside. And I want you to know, I really appreciate the work you do with, uh, opioid advisory committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's, it's an honor and public health service is a wonderful thing. I don't take it for granted and enjoy every day.
Mr. Goode, I just wanted to follow up on one question. Sorry, it's, sorry, my brain is working a little slower tonight. Um, so what you said earlier is the cancer rates within Granville County are trending, um, in comparison to other counties, there's no higher, no lower. I mean, based on, uh, what you understand about the types of cancer, so just in general, what could you say?
In this particular region, I don't see big differences because we've had lots of inquiries about that. Certainly there are people who lose family members and are very concerned, as I have. So, so it's important to look into the data and, and try to understand what causes cancer. And it's just a really difficult thing. Sometimes it's lifestyle choices, sometimes it's genetics, sometimes it's the environment, sometimes it's, uh, the history of tobacco use and, and the exposure to lots of things we know are carcinogenic. So it's really hard to just put your finger on one particular cause.
Okay.
And, and we are always investigating, always.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Be healthy, be well, make good choices.
Make healthy choices. Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is the, uh, public comments, and we didn't have anyone sign up, so we'll move right along to, uh, sheriff's matters. Sheriff Fountain, uh, I, I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting or not, but we moved the, uh, item nine to our consent agenda.
First, give me honest to God, the author and finisher of everything. I stand for you tonight on two separate matters. Those two separate matters, first is the purchase of body cameras for our deputies and staff at the Granville County Sheriff's Office. The request is to enter into an agreement to purchase these body cams, um, initially, let me get to it. Initially, we want to purchase 15 body cams that would be a bank system, which means patrol deputies will go in to the seven deputies that are on shift at that time, pull their body cams, wear those cams while seven are banking. At the end of that shift, those staff would then return back to the sheriff's office, bank their body cams, download that information, and that process continues to repeat itself. Additionally, we're looking at a process of possibly using asset forfeiture money to purchase more to outfit the rest of the agency if, when time comes that we can get some more. Also, the ones that we will transfer from the use internally will go to our special operations unit and to our SWAT team or SRT teams. So we want to make sure that we're covering not only ourselves, but our citizens and making sure that we are being transparent in the execution of the duties of the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office, in far as the body cams, which one was doing first, body cams or cars? Body cams, sorry. So the Granville County Sheriff's Office is willing to use asset forfeiture money to come up with the first initial, uh, tranche of money for the body cams, and they were asking that the county participate in helping fund the rest of that program for years two through five.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Mention that.
Yeah. Good evening, Sheriff, how are you?
Good evening.
So it's my understanding that the asset forfeiture money can be used the first year, but not for reoccurring years. Do, do we know?
Correct, that is correct. Cannot use for reoccurring contract.
It cannot?
No.
So if, if we put, go ahead, Mr. Ren.
I was gonna say, that's generally correct, which you don't want to do with asset forfeiture money because it is a one-time type expenditures rely on it for continuing purchases or create an environment where a law enforcement agency is encouraged to police for profit in order to fund its operations.
And, and I agree with that. I'm just making sure that we understood that that is a, so this is a, the sheriff's office will be funding the first year, the years after that will be funded with, out of the, out of the sheriff's budget.
Correct.
Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sheriff, do you have policy, will you have policies, do you currently have policies in place for body camera use?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And I apologize for being frivolous in, in the comment of that.
No, I'm just, I mean, I just, it's important to me that, uh, this is, I agree with the sheriff, sheriff's office, this is vital piece of, um, technology that our law enforcement officers should have. Um, I just want to make sure as we work through the budget next year that they, we're planning to have flat budget across the board with the other departments, in fact, asking them to, to cut 5% from their budget. So as we review the sheriff's budget going into next year, how this lays into his budget to be able to do that to, uh, because that would be an incurred cost, um, that will, um, hopefully be able to derive from other line items within his budget, be able to cover that cost without elevating that budget.
Yes, any, any other questions? Any, any comments? And, you know, the shortfalls that we're seeing on the detention side with the, uh, money for the juveniles that you have no control over, you know, we're, we're looking at half million dollars shortfall that we're going to have to come up with and, uh, I would like to see this come out of sheriff's budget and not separate from the county because we're having to come up with so much separate from the county.
I think that's a possibility because again, I've always said if we could use some of that money that we generate from the commissary, I know it goes to death services, but if we could generate some of that funding to use to pay down some of this and anything that's left over from our fiscal year for the sheriff's office side, take that money and apply it to where we could utilize it to these programs and for those inmate costs of juveniles that we can't predict.
Yes, and, and we thank you. Thank you for working with us, Sheriff. Uh, the recommendation is approve, approval of entering a five-year contract for the purchase and maintenance of a 15 bundle body camera system from Axon Enterprises Incorporated for $137,111.80. The U.S. Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture Account will be used to pay for the beginning for year one, fiscal year 26, in the amount, am I reading this right, $33,994.1 and line item funded, but we've crested at the beginning of fiscal year 27 to fund the remaining four years of the contract. Uh, Sheriff Fountain further recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager to execute the contract once finalized by the attorney. Is there any, any questions, any further questions, any further comments? All right, do we hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
A second motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any questions? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff, and the next item, please.
The next item, we have a new certification of our vehicles, nothing expect of ours. Sheriff, we could, Michael, please, sorry about that.
No problem, sorry. So about two months ago, we had a, uh, Butler PD had a chase involving some stolen vehicles. And during that chase, one of our, uh, deputies with my approval, because we didn't have, um, in-car cameras on every vehicle, so we had a few in our vehicles, but that chase gave us cause to believe that we need to move aggressively into upfitting all of our patrol vehicles and emergency response that would, um, make sure that again, we protect our community, we protect our agency from any civil liabilities, and we're being transparent when we need to be. So as a request of the Granville County Sheriff's Office that we purchase, and we're entering an agreement where we can put 40 new, uh, in-car cameras in our fleet of vehicles. That 40 will go into our current vehicles, and as we upfit the new vehicles, we would roll that cost into the fleet management system. So we're requesting that again, we use asset forfeiture money to pay for the initial upfront cost of the first year, and then the county work with us in absorbing that cost and within the sheriff's office budget for years two through five.
Okay, does any, anyone have any questions for Sheriff on this?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, could you please explain to the public, uh, other than, you said it briefly, and you have a good line of study in here, because I know there's a Justice Department study out in 2017 where about 70% of all sheriff's office, law enforcement agencies actually already had, um, body cameras. So, uh, we have a technology gap.
Yes.
That's clear. Um, so could you kind of, just going a little bit besides capturing something like that, the, the value of something like that from the public making a $400,000, um, investment, uh, what does that do for your agency and, and how you're going to manage that, uh, in regards to your policy?
So the policy will be in the technology will be anytime that the blue lights are activated, the body, the in-car camera comes on automatically. It also has a time 30, well, it can go from three minutes, 30 seconds to three minutes delay when you activate it, turn the blue lights on, those types of things. So we've studied in the, in the documents that you have, there's a 93% exoneration wait, rate when you have vehicle in-car cameras about, about, you know, Big Brother watching or the impropriety or the deputies doing something that is not consistent with the law or the policies that we have. So in that vein, we had to just go through a, uh, investigation where the young guy stole some cars, uh, one of the individuals died from a wreck in a fatality in Creedmore that we were involved in that chase. And the thing that saved the county from any kind of litigation was the fact that there is a camera inside that vehicle. So the state highway patrol, when they looked at it to justify our part in that chase and that we didn't pick, maneuver the guy or cause the accident, it was his choice, the way he drove, it saved the county some civil liabilities from that perspective. And we will have those designed, we have policies already, if we have vehicles with in-car cameras in them, they will continue to be utilized, they will continue to be always pushed forward. The technology is great. It's a cloud-based system that we will go to, so we don't have it. The DA will have automatic access to our body cams as well as our in-car cameras, so there is no request for information. Axon has an agreement that as soon as something happens with the use of force and/or the initiation of that body cam or in-car camera, the DA's office immediately, without any court proceedings or anything, can view everything for the transparency of what we do. And that's why we're trying to increase the safety as well as transparency of the Granville County Sheriff's Office.
I, I have a quick question. So you brought up a, a point about the in, the in cam, the camera inside the vehicle comes on when the blue light comes on.
Activated, yes.
If the deputy chooses not to turn the blue light on.
There is technology where they can, it'll just come on record all the time. So that's just like your body cameras. Your body cameras are recording all the time.
When does the body cam come on?
Body cam comes on, it stays on at the touch of a button, but we're working, I think Russ and I have sat in on some conversations with a company, anytime they get out of their car, but your body cam is always recording, it's just when you activate it. And it's a, a, uh, storage-based, cloud-based system to where we can go back, pull information, that's why I say that time-sensitive stuff, before they even activate it, it's still recording, and you set the time on when you want them. But what we're going to do as far as the policies is require deputies, whenever they stop their car, turn your camera on. Whenever you go to a house and knock on the door, turn your camera on. Exit in your vehicle, do anything that's law enforcement specific, turn it on. Any encounters, activations, turn them on. So that's going to be one of our policies, and we will hold people accountable to doing that. Even with the ones we have now, that we're trying to phase out, they will try to bank them, but if some of them don't work. So we just want to make sure we stay in concurrent and making sure there is no liability on the county for anything that somebody may do.
Sheriff, could you also elaborate on how this would, um, work with your accreditation process?
That's one of the things that they have, Ms. Pounds and Rob Bayless and, uh, Chief Clementson, them are still working with the accreditation. So we haven't started the clock, we're doing all the pre-work to make sure the accreditation is done, and it's part of that process. To be accredited, you have to have certain things in place. And one of those things, in-car cameras, body cams, and your policies and procedures have to be up to date. We had an initial, uh, assessment done by the state and the, uh, because the state has their accreditation, then ACA has an accreditation process. So we've done most of those already with a pre-audit, and we have those recommendations of what we need to do to clean our stuff up. And those, one of the things is ensuring that we are having a technology be able to be a basis of facts of information for the community.
So board, just for a reminder that part of our strategic plan was that the sheriff's office would reach, uh, working with the sheriff's office that, uh, would reach accreditation both, uh, in the law enforcement side and the detention side. Uh, so it's in line with, uh, this funding would be in line with our strategic plan.
And speaking of the jail, we just passed another, uh, no deficiency inspection from the state and the Department of Health and Human Services.
Well, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
If you haven't had an opportunity to go to the jail, come on over.
I'll pass.
Actually, I've asked the sheriff, uh, actually I've asked the sheriff if I could participate in a ride-along.
Yes.
And a tour, so he'll be working on that and encourage other commissioners to do the same so we can have firsthand view of this, so we can, uh, speak about it to our constituents, what we're observing and so forth. But he has been. And a tour. So he'll be working on that and encourage other commissioners to do the same so we can have firsthand view of this so we can speak about it to our constituents, what we're observing and so forth. But he has been. He's going to be putting that together.
All right, any other, any other questions for Sheriff Fountain? Recommendation, Sheriff Fountain recommends approval of entering a five-year contract for the purchase and maintenance of forty in-car camera systems from Axon. Enterprise Incorporated for four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, two hundred fifty-six cent, uh, four eleven thousand. Two hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Boy, that's some big numbers for a poor boy like me. The U.S. Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture Account will be used to pay for year one fiscal year twenty-six in the amount of eighty-two thousand. Two hundred fifty dollars and thirty-three cents. And line item funding will be requested at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-seven. To fund the remaining four years of the contract. Sheriff Fountain further recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager. To execute the contract once finalized by the county attorney. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, and I just want to make something clear to not just the board but to the community. We are investigating a use of force that happened with one of my deputies and, well, three of my deputies, one in particular. But I cannot release any information in reference to that investigation until the county attorney, myself. And the DA's office and the State Bureau of Investigations complete their investigation. So we will release all this information as well as the body cam footage per. Per the law. After Attorney Rand and I have a conversation, we've just finished up our part of the investigation. And we're waiting to finish up with the SBI and what they have to see what their recommendations are. So everything is going to be clear. We will release everything. In its appropriate time, but this is nothing that we took lightly. Durham County Sheriff's Office assisted with our internal investigation. And we are going to cooperate to the fullest extent that we should in the vein of being transparent as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
And now next on our agenda is tax matters, consideration of interest reversal request. And this is presentation is by our tax administrator, Jenny Short. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I'm here today to present you with the information that Charles W. Kelly the fourth has given the Tax Department. Charles submitted a letter and information to the Tax Department requesting the Board of Commissioners reverse interest. That is being applied to his twenty twenty-four tax bill. Our tax bills were mailed out July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Kelly was under the impression that the tax office received his payment since he mailed it November fourth, twenty twenty-four. However, his check was intercepted and never received by the Tax Department. And I believe Mr. Kelly is, oh, that's Mr. Kelly, okay. Mr. Kelly was notified on December the twelfth by Wells Fargo Loss Prevention. That a fraudulent check had been discovered and after that phone call, he stopped by his bank, which is the State Employees Credit Union. To discuss this further. He ended up closing out his bank account, opening a new one, and at that time. It was discovered that there was a second, second fraudulent check with that exact same check number. On January twenty-fifth. Charles Kelly received a delinquent notice from the Tax Department. I imagine he was a bit surprised. After receiving that notice, he went back and reviewed all the checks he had written in twenty twenty-four. And upon reviewing his records, he discovered the check he wrote to the Tax Department had not cleared his bank account. While this is an unfortunate situation. Do I point it this way? No. Back up. Okay. So while this is an unfortunate situation, North Carolina General Statute one oh five, three eighty A, it prohibits. The government governing body of a taxing unit from leasing, refunding, or compromising. Any portion of taxes levied unless it follows, unless it falls under. One oh five, three eighty-one. Now, North Carolina General Statute one oh five, three eighty-one. You have, says that you have to have a valid defense and property tax imposed through either clerical error, an illegal error. Or a tax levied for an illegal purpose. So this would also apply to interest since North Carolina General Statute one oh five. Two seventy-three fifteen says tax or taxes. Is the principal amount of any property tax or dog license tax and cost penalties and interest. So since the law only permits tax refunds or releases. In a very limited circumstance like illegal tax or clerical error. The tax administrator recommends not approving the request to wa, to waive interest. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Does anybody have any questions? I know in our tax, in our packet here, we have a letter from Mr. Kelly. We have. Incident Investigation Report. And we have copies of the checks. And also we have a copy of a letter from the. Christopher McLaughlin from the Professor of Public Law and Government School of Government. From the UNC School of Government in Chapel Hill. And have everyone had a chance to to read this? Does our attorney have any comments?
The only thing I would add to this, Mr. Chairman, is that. I think you have to take this into consideration, the amount that's asked to be forgiven here is relatively small, but the same. Thought process would apply to any amount that is asked to be forgiven under similar circumstances. And I just want to point out to the board that. General Statute one oh five dash three eighty C says that any tax that has been released, refunded, or compromised in violation of this section. May be recovered from any member or members of the governing body who voted for the release, refund, or compromise. By civil action instituted by any resident of the taxing unit. And when collected, the recovered tax shall be paid to the treasurer of the taxing unit. The cost of bringing the action, including reasonable attorney's fees, shall be allowed to plaintiff in the event that the tax is recovered. So this. Statutory scheme gives a private right of action against the members of the board and provides statutory remedy for attorney's fees. If there's a violation of of the statutes here. So just want to be clear that while the the amount is small and it may seem harmless, there. Pretty stiff remedies if the law is not followed in the section.
Thank you, Mr. Ren.
I need, need some clarification, Mr. Chair. So I think what you're saying, Mr. Ren, is that. If it doesn't fall within. A, B, or C. What are, what are you saying? There's no, there's no room for variance or, I mean. Or, or there is, but if we do, there's, we do it so at risk of some type of liability?
Right, there's no statutory authority and Ms. Short, correct me if you think I'm getting this wrong, but there's no statutory authority for the board. To relieve or to refund this tax or to forgive this tax. And if you do it. Without that statutory authority, the law holds the members of this board personally liable and also provides an incentive for taxpayers. To sue this board by paying, by having a statutory mechanism to recover reasonable attorney's fees from the board.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions?
Any more clarity?
Pretty clear.
Any, any questions? Any other questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
I really struggle with this, to be honest with you, because it looks like this gentleman did everything he possibly could do and he ends up. With a hundred and five dollar additional interest paid. And so my struggle is the fact that, you know, it's the law does not allow. In my view, a common sense decision, nor does it give us the flexibility to make. A a commandant's decision, at least in my view, common sense, and that means. I'd like to hear what other board members think before we make a motion on that.
I agree and concur with Commissioner May. I think this gentleman did everything correct. He followed through the process correctly. Unfortunately, there's no statutory that gives this board. Any authority or otherwise we are personally liable if I understand our county attorney correctly.
That's correct.
Unfortunately.
So, Mr. Chair, I hope it's appropriate if I ask this next question of the county attorney. Mr. County Attorney, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to deny the requests. Unfortunately, the. Law is harsh on situations like this, but it, sometimes that harshness is necessary to administer a tax system fairly and impartially.
I know we're struggling with this.
You're right, Mr. Chair.
But the, you know, the recommendation from the tax administrator recommends the Board of Commissioners to not approve reversing interest due to lack of statutory authority.
I make a motion that we do not, that we. That we take the recommendation to county attorney for that reason, that it's not within our statutory. We do not have the statutory provisions to make a decision otherwise without risking further county tax dollars in defense of that decision. So I make a motion that we do not approve. I make a motion that we go with the recommendation provided by the tax administrator.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second a motion.
We have a second. So any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. And now our next item of business is emergency management matters, the fire commission recommendation. All right.
All right, good evening, gentlemen, ladies. So Jason couldn't make it today, he was under the weather, so I'm going to stand in and try to help you guys out with this. So with the the part-time firefighter reimbursement. The original intent was to provide the paid firefighters and all twelve volunteer fire departments Monday through Friday during normal business hours. So where we started, we had one firefighter Monday through Friday, maximum ten hours a day, fifty hours a week. Eighteen dollar reimbursement max, which was a max amount for all twelve fire departments was fifty, was fifty thousand, four hundred per department. So our first change, Jason came a few months ago and got it set up where we could reimburse two firefighters to work in a given day. If another day in the week wasn't covered. So if they worked Monday, Wednesday, Friday and still had Tuesday and Thursday open. On Friday, they could work an extra firefighter to be able to make up for those open openings that they had. So they still had the maximum of ten hours a day per firefighter and still falling under that fifty-hour maximum per week. The maximum reimbursement was still eighteen dollars an hour and still held under that fifty thousand, four hundred mark. So with that, we were able to lower the response rate. So what we were looking to do with putting firefighters in the firehouses. Worked very well. We were able to get down to the industry standards, which is around three minutes for volunteer fire departments. Some of them got below it and actually increasing on paid firefighter standards, which is two minutes or less to be out the door. So when you think of a volunteer fire department and the pager goes off and people have to run to the firehouse, crank the trucks and get there. To get out the door in three minutes is is very good. And we've had multiple departments that are at the three-minute market, not lower. So the, what we're doing so far is working very well.
Good evening. My name's Andy. I'm the current chair for the Fire Commission. And we come to you this evening with the new recommendation from the Fire Commission that the Fire Commission. Is recommending modifying the current reimbursement policy to lift the fifty-hour weekly restriction. And to lift any restrictions on the number of firefighters per shift and remain at the funding level currently provided. What this does is the fire departments can be reimbursed for as many hours as they deem fit in each week. Fire departments can be reimbursed for working as many firefighters as they deem fit each week. And on the flip side, what this does not do, it does not change the maximum of ten hours per firefighter per day. Does not change the maximum reimbursement rate of eighteen dollars plus FICO. And does not change the maximum amount of fifty thousand, four hundred dollars per year. And with that being said, Mr. Ken?
So the way this works is with that fifty thousand, four hundred. If your firefighters only make fifteen dollars an hour instead of eighteen dollars an hour, because there's a tier. If you're just a firefighter one and two, you make fifteen dollars an hour. If you're a driver operator. You may make sixteen fifty. If you're fully trained, have all your classes, you make eighteen dollars an hour. So we have some departments that can't fill all the slots. We have some departments that aren't paying those max amounts. So there's good quantities of money that's still being left in that pot for that fifty thousand, four hundred. What they're asking for is to be able to work additional firefighters. In a week, so they want to take that fifty-hour cap away, which allows them to use that additional money there. To help staff the fire department. So what they're trying to do is. Not everything we do can be done with a single firefighter. So trying to have the additional firefighters there from. Trying to test hoes, we have ISO coming. ISO is a big thing. We have two departments that are actually preparing for it now in June. The rest of us will be between July and December. So doing hose testing, re-racking hose on a truck, cleaning hose. Moving equipment on the trucks. A lot of that stuff takes more than one person. So if they have the available hours, what they're asking for is to be able to use those available hours to start. Staffing the department with some of those additional hours. Also, I don't know, did y'all get the the sheets with all the breakdowns?
Do you have that in overhead?
I do not think so.
I think that's important. I think that's important piece to be able to show because, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, are you ready for questions?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I think it's an important piece to show, because I think looking at the graph that you have, everyone's somewhere, not everyone, but many. everyone's somewhere, not everyone, but many departments around seventy percent range of staffing.
Oh, definitely.
For, for the days. But the question that I think that this board has to answer is, is how would the removal of hour personnel cap improve having someone assigned to the volunteer station on a daily basis?
It won't increase the firefighters assigned on a daily basis, but it'll increase the amount of work that they can do and the amount of firefighters we get on the scene quickly by having them there.
So you have two now can work per day, correct?
As long as they have the available hours within that fifty hour week.
Right, and that doesn't appear to be the problem about meeting the hours during the week, because in some-
Yes, yeah, we're, for the average wise, we're doing very well with getting personnel on the trucks.
So I think, how does, how does this, how does this do that? How does this, how does this move the, so originally the board approved to put two people on the truck, originally one to two. How does this move the ball forward to ensure that we have someone on there Monday through Friday every day? What, how does that move that? I understand what you're saying, that on Tuesday it might have three guys there, four guys, whatever they assign. But how does that move the ball forward in staffing in the station every day?
One of the things that our challenges are, is training new people. So it's kind of hard to get people on board and, because you really can't hire your own volunteers to work this. You can use them as backup, you can use them to cover shifts, but you're having to bring somebody on to your department to drive your trucks and to use your equipment, which not all trucks are the same. So what this would allow us to do is to have two, two people work in a single day to be able to train that person, to be able to use your equipment and to learn your area. And that's just one of the, the different things that it could work for.
So you're saying it, it provides a training opportunity?
Oh, definitely.
And so through that training opportunity, that might be one way to be able to place more people, more days during the week on the trucks?
That's correct.
May, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So you mentioned that there could be a day where there was theoretically four people.
Yes.
Saturday or Friday.
So if we remove that, that fifty hour cap, if they had the money left over in that fifty thousand four hundred, which I, I have a chart here that shows how much each department has to date, how much they have left over. Whatever they had left over in there, they could work it, paying whatever rate they're to pay, and we would keep track of it. We would have to develop a way to keep track of it, to keep it within the confinement of that fifty thousand four hundred.
My question would be, a fire didn't always happen Monday through Friday. Why not move two of those people to a Saturday when they're not staffed?
Right.
You know, I'm speaking for me, and I think my district would know that somebody was at the firehouse also on Saturday would be great. Now I know eventually that's probably what we'd like to see, you know, but i- if you're gonna do four, why not do two on Friday and two on Saturday?
Yep, so the, the departments that aren't filling as many days would have that luxury to do that. The problem is, some of the departments that are covering days, you have one department that's covered a hundred percent of the days. They still have money in this fund because not all the firefighters made eighteen dollars an hour. You have some that have less than a thousand dollars, so, or right at a thousand dollars. So it would be a challenge for that department to do that same thing, to be able to show, to be able to, to cover on a Saturday. That would be something in the budget meetings to be able to, the firefighter budget to start giving some more money to that fund.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
When, when we started this staffing of the firefighters in the stations, the county's general consensus from the chiefs association is, we need help Monday through Friday. The weekends, more people are off duty at home. So you're more apt to have someone respond to a fire call Saturday and Sunday. Myself, I work for the city of Raleigh, from six AM to five PM, I am unavailable Monday through Friday. Outside of that, I can respond. So the intent behind this original staffing deal was purposely Monday through Friday. With recommendations of the chiefs, coming back to the fire commission, they have argued that one might have been on the table and they would like to be able to utilize it to their best abilities to have more people in the stations Monday through Friday to be able to provide an extra level of protection when it's needed.
Would you say, sir, that most of the fire departments, and I, I hear exactly what you're saying, but would you think most of them have that same situation that there are people available, the volunteers are available more readily on Saturdays and Sundays? And I know they have families, and I know they have things they like to do on weekends.
It is my opinion, yes. It may be a couple excerpts with the summertime, springtime vacationing, different events going on around throughout the county where you have a group that has went out and enjoying themselves, that it does put a strain on responding personnel. But again, to me, it's left up to the fire chiefs to manage their station, their staff, the best in the way they see fit.
Thank you.
And some of the other avenues we were looking at with this is with the storms coming through. If we had the abidoo of them being able to put three people on trucks, when the snow came in, that would be three trucks available to go out right away, not somebody having to get up, shovel off their, shovel out their car, clean off their car, trying to get to the firehouse. We'd already have trucks en route.
So, go ahead. So we, right now, the, each fire department has two paid farmers?
No, no, sir.
From Monday to Friday, right?
No, sir, we have, we have one slot for a firefighter Monday through Friday, ten hours a day, five days a week. So we have limited to fifty hours. So where that second slot comes in, let's say Tuesday, they couldn't find anybody to work. Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, they can work a second person that day to be able to fill that slot from Tuesday. And that's what we, that's what y'all voted to allow them to do.
Excuse me, Mr. Culbert, is my understanding that they were authorized up to two a day?
Yes, they are allowed up to two per day.
Okay.
But they have to stay within the fifty hours per week, and they have to stay under the fifty thousand four hundred for the year.
So if you work two people all week long, you would exceed the fifty hours?
That is correct. And then they would have to take it out of their own budget to offset the cost of having two people in there Monday through Friday.
And the, and then just to answer his question and we'll help you and Mr. Culbert, if you could help. The reason for the fifty thousand four hundred was, is initially the budget was set for one person.
Correct.
Because that was the original goal, was to put a, a body on the truck every day.
Yes.
Okay, and then there was another proposal brought forward and allowed for two. And so that was approved.
Yes.
And so that, just so you know, so it went from one to two, the monies didn't change, and I think that's part of the concern.
So you're saying you need to put more peoples on the, on the, at the station? And you already got two, right?
So, so if we remove the fifty thou, if we remove the fifty hours per week at any point in that month, let's say vacations, they, they could only cover eight shifts in that month. All the rest of those shifts could be used in any of those following months. So if we remove the fifty hours a week, if we figure out how, how we're going to either implement it from today or implement it from July one or however, but if we figure out how, how we're gonna set it up, the, whatever leftover money is there, they'd be able to use that money to staff the fire department, as many people as they felt needed.
You know, I, I've listened to your explanation of things, and it makes sense. The problem I have is the way it's written doesn't match your explanation. Yeah, it's, it's like, very vague. You know, you guys explained it well, and I appreciate it, thank you. But the, the way it's written, I just, I've got a problem with the way, the way it's written versus the way you guys have laid it out. You've laid it out very precise, very concise, thank you. Is there any other questions from other board members?
Did they read the whole background information? We, we went right to the slides. Did you read the whole background initially?
I, I did not, but I can read it real quick.
Yeah, I think that would help, so people have a better understanding of what was actually proposed.
So background, it says currently the fire, the volunteer fire departments are allowed to reimburse up to two firefighters a day, maximum hours of fifty hours, of fifty hours a week. The fire department had concerns about the funds that were left in, in the account and where they were not able to cover those days during the week. The fire department wanted to be able to spend the unused funds remaining, that remained in the account. A motion was made by the fire commissioner, Chip Fudge, to modify the current reimbursement policy and lift the fifty hour a week restriction and to lift any restrictions on the number of firefighters per shift and remain at the funding level currently provided. Motion was seconded by Matt Norwood and passed. So the recommendation was, the fire commission recommends to modify the current reimbursement policy to lift the fifty hour weekly restriction and to lift any restrictions on the number of firefighters per shift and remain at the funding level currently provided.
So technically, the way this thing is written, you could blow through your year's budget in a month.
Yes, but the, the-
Now, I know it's up to them to manage that budget.
Yep.
But there again, it's written, your explanation and the way it's written don't work.
On my side, the intent on my side is I'm going to keep a running total of those available hours. So my goal was to be able to say, hey, this is what you use this month. Your total of available hours is this, and they have to manage those hours. But the, the fire commission made it very abundantly clear that the intent is to maintain this throughout the year and be able to cover those shifts as much as possible.
So how would you maintain that throughout the year for fifty thousand four hundred dollars? One, and two is, how does it promote getting more people on the truck per day when we already have two allowed per day? That, that's the central question for me, and it was at the meeting, so that's, that's- The key is, the key intended purpose is to put someone on a fire truck, hopefully two people, every day, if possible. We understand the volunteers, I think everyone do an incredible job. But I think the next question comes back to then, how much should be in the budget for part-time work? Because once you open up the cap, then you're immediately gonna say, well, how much are we gonna provide within the funding formulas for that? Because then you could actually staff it with hypothetically three people Monday through Wednesday, but then leave it void Thursday and Friday and quickly expend your money. Understanding that the chiefs manage it.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
And this, what was the original plan for the funds, should there be any left over? And maybe Commissioner May can answer that, I don't, I don't know.
It, it actually went back into the tax fund.
I'm sorry, I didn't-
It went back into the tax fund.
So originally the plan was for any funds from this leftover went back to the general fund?
Yes, our general fund, the tax-
Fire tax.
I understand, I, I understand, the fire tax fund.
Basically, since we were starting from ground zero.
Right.
This is a way to build up a fund balance in the general fund of fire tax.
But, okay, you just brought up a great point. To build up a fund balance, okay? Now, if we, if captains don't have that, there won't be a fund balance to build up as quickly, or chiefs, I'm sorry. Am I correct?
Part of it, yes. Uh, what's the other avenues that the money is not being utilized? The one for the first responder program.
Okay.
All departments are not utilizing that. We had recommended, it was approved, to allow each department up to twenty thousand dollars to do the first responder program.
Workman's comp has been paid by the state the last couple of years, so that, all that money is going into the fund also.
For, for clarity purposes, any unspent money in any portion of the fire tax budget that remains unspent at the end of the year from any category goes into the fire tax fund's fund balance.
So, so that's the way it was set up, right?
Yes, and that's sort of the way all of our county accounts work as well.
Okay, so, so if I can't get nobody to work my fire department only, not on Tuesday, but I can get on Wednesday, Thursday, and the money where I had left from that week caused from Tuesday and, and Friday goes back into the, to the, uh, fire general funds, right? And then at the end of the year, if you don't spend all, if, if you haven't spent all your decap money, it goes back into the, okay. So what you, what you're asking now for is to uncapped it, so you can spend it all. If, I'm talking, I'm saying, if they need it, you can spend it all.
The rest is speaking, yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think what threw me off in looking at this, the third sentence in the background, and I think the explanation on trying to enhance service probably would have gone over a little better in the wording of it. The way that reads, the fire departments wanted to be able to spend all the unused funds that remain in the account may be in order to, as opposed to that, what I think I'm hearing is, is really to be able to enhance service. They have the funds, they want to have flexibility. And I think that's probably more aligned, because as county managers say, really, you know, in a department, we wouldn't want any manager to come to us and say that they would find a way to spend all the money in their account. And so I think with the explanation, I, I think I understand it, but that was the one sentence in that, that, that threw me a little bit.
And Commissioner Cozer, my, my heartache here is the way it's written versus the way it's been explained. And if we vote on this as it's written, we're voting for it as written, not as explained. So I, I feel like we need a little bit of clarification, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Without any further discussion, I, I'd like to make a motion that we table this to another time and we go through and get some better language to clarify the recommendation.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? Is it too late for me to ask a question of the chairman?
Go ahead.
We're going to go back and look at to rewrite this or to come back with a better way that it's proposed, am I correct?
So, so I think it would help-
Just so I understand?
Yes, sir, no, I, I got you, but I want to help with just one thing. Mr. Culbert, if you would, they have a meeting tomorrow night, fire commission does. And so it'd be good if the board could provide them some guidance on, you know, as, as they relook at this, on, on what you're, what you're actually looking for, and you could get that information back to the county manager and he could be able to share it with, with the board, so that they can ultimately be able to draft something that meets what their, what the board is attempting to do, which is to spend money to enhance services to better place personnels on the vehicles on a daily basis. Is that correct, Mr. Culbert?
Yes, sir, that is the intent.
Do you have anything that you could provide to the commissioners that will help them in regards to that as you go back to your meeting tomorrow night?
This is still a new thing for Grand County for fire departments, fire chiefs. We are working still through kinks of trying to achieve the best possible service that each department has contracted with the county to provide for the citizens of this county. And again, with twelve departments coming back, giving us direction that they see fit in their respective territories, we're doing the best we can. It is still a fluid situation. We're still just working through, trying to do what's best as far- We're doing the best we can. It is still a fluid situation. We're still just working through, trying to do what's best as far as the county and the taxation. But also providing personnel to be able to respond to these incidents. Uh, my personal fire department, we had two grass fires and a mutual aid to a structured fire earlier today. Uh, I haven't seen reports to see how many people were able to respond, so doing things that we're asking for tonight greatly helps every department throughout the whole county. Uh, some people look at it as spending money, yes it is, but at the same sense, we're trying to be good stewards of the money and spend it in appropriate ways where we can get people in the right places at the right time to assist emergencies throughout this county.
And, uh, Mister, if you don't mind, Mister Chair, and I know it's already been voted on, but it would help for what we are going to try to do tomorrow night. The, um, what I'm hearing from the concern is we don't want all the money spent up just by spending it, that there are actually a purpose and a means. We understand that, that testing hoes and doing all those, we, we get that. Um, but as you, and I want to get, hear the other commissioners got to say about this. So fifty thousand four hundred dollars, let's just say hypothetically that they place two people on a truck every day. And I think there's got to be some thought into that actually can be done, right? If that actually can be done, then how do we go about, um, placing that in the silo, uh, called part-time? We have a silo, a funding silo, says part-time, at fifty thousand four hundred that was set up on one person. So, again, the more that we dilute the funding tree, the more you dilute, uh, the, um, enhancement funding, which is done by proportionality and list, tax value, population, road miles, area, housing units, business, call volume and rooftops. And so, uh, I just, if we could just kind of give them an idea, because there's several things they're thinking about, am I correct? Mister Culbert, and could you just kind of, just give us a little idea? Because, because I, because, because we, we have to start making decisions on the Fire Commission that we can get resolved.
Yes, we, we have talked about, uh, again, as far as the, the silos, the grant funding and stuff of that nature. Uh, the departments are now coming back to the Fire Commission, letting us know that, uh, for the quantity of money that they are receiving now, it's kicking them out of some grants. So we're trying to look at, uh, reallocating some of that stuff, uh, as far as equality, not equally. So it's one of those things, we do know that different parts of the county that are growing faster than others. But we are also trying to provide the same amount of coverage in respect to the whole county as, as a whole. It is a lot of things being brought forth, again, the first responder program. I think there's one extra department has, uh, joined on with that since we offered a twenty thousand dollar incentive to be first responders. The enhanced funding that the fire departments has, I was just asking Ken, uh, as far as you speaking about the silos and stuff, as far as based off of one person for the fifty thousand four hundred. Uh, with enhanced funding, the department has the opportunity to either pay more per hour, or they can pay multiple people if they so choose. They have to put it in their budget to be able to justify that standpoint. It's just what they get reimbursed from the, uh, county on the fire tax is still based off of one person. So again, this is still a, a fluid deal of trying to do what's best for the county as well as the departments of trying to look further down the road. I got my own ideas, I'm going to keep them to myself at this time. I spoke to a few folks, but at the same sense, the county is changing and the fire service is going to have to change with it.
Anything further?
No, I just welcome the commissioners to come to those meetings. You can hear firsthand from the, the board members and, uh, the chair as they work through this. Uh, and as they're preparing, have not prepared the budget for this coming year as they work to do that. And these type of decisions will help them, uh, do that as the board, uh, does that. And, and one last thing, so that's the kind of thing that they need guidance on. If they were to make a change or bring up a change proposal to this board, I think the question always comes up is, when can it go into effect? And so I think this board, uh, could, could help them tonight if we could just simply state how, if the change were to be made during a budget year. Do we wait to the next budget year to make any changes or adopt any changes in regards to the timelines? Or do we, or do we allow flexibility that they can change midstream? And that, those kind of things help them in making their decisions, and, and that's, that's what, that's all.
And I think the board members need to think about this and contact the county manager and tell him your thoughts, and he can convey them back. Thank you. See any further on, on this item? Thank you. We appreciate you coming here tonight. Appreciate your patience, and thank you for the explanation.
Thank y'all very much.
Yeah. All right. With that, we'll move on to our county manager's report.
Nothing this evening, Mister Chair, thank you.
Okay. All right, how about our county attorney? Got anything for us, Jim?
Sorry, you've got a couple of orders on special use permits that are in front of you, um, uh, tonight. And I just wanted to, first of all, it, it takes a while to get the minutes back and then to circulate the orders and get them approved by the other attorneys. Of course, the attorneys for the applicants want these things approved as soon as possible so they can, um, start construction. But I would note that we didn't give them in time to put them in the agenda, so we can either hold them and put them in the agenda next time, or you all can vote on them, uh, tonight. But I, to be able to finalize these, we do need your, your vote on the, on, on the special use permit orders. And I'm happy to, um, do it either way.
Okay. Board members, have you had opportunity to look over these?
Not since we just got them a few minutes ago, no, sir, I have not.
That's true.
So I would, um, I would submit to you that I, I'm happy to pass along the message that, um, Rome didn't get built in a day, and we're happy to, um, put these on the next agenda unless somebody else has it wrong.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I want to ask that we put this on, uh, till the next board meeting, if that's okay with the other?
Perfectly fine with me, that's fine.
Do we need a, is everybody in agreement, or do we need to make a motion and have a vote?
I'll, I'll make the motion to make it official that we, uh, table this until the next meeting date.
Okay.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, eyes have it, motion carries. We'll table this to our next meeting in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Anything, anything further?
Just one other issue. Um, as the board knows, Mister Karen accepted a position as part-time town administrator of the town of STEM. STEM is a council, mayor, form of government. There's no statutory prohibition on a county commissioner serving as town administrator in a council, mayor jurisdiction. I've discussed with Mister Gooch and Mister Karen that we must be vigilant of conflicts and the appearance of conflicts and matters that come before the board related to the town of STEM. We will work to identify such matters, reporting them to the board, and Mister Karen has made clear that he will seek to recuse himself as appropriate. I just wanted to make that statement and, and make sure that was in the record.
Yeah, uh, thank you. And also, I, I didn't see this at the beginning of the meeting, I should have. Mister Karen is not with us tonight because he's in Washington DC. I think they're doing some lobbying up there. So, uh, that's, that's why he's absent tonight from the board. And with that, we're, uh...
I do have one matter for executive session that'll be brief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have one matter for closed session. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Anything else? Is that good? Okay. As I mentioned, uh, Commissioner Karen is not with us tonight due to being in Washington. And, uh, Commissioner Jay, do you have some remarks for us, comments?
Only remark I have, I thoroughly enjoyed, uh, the veterans program, uh, Saturday. Even though I rushed back from Virginia, but I did get that in time. And I really thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Willoughby?
The only thing I have is, uh, I was volunteered to read for the Read Across America today, uh, my first time. And it was absolutely wonderful. One of our school board members, uh, Ms. Baker was also there. Now, we all had different classrooms, and I got to be honest, I'm thinking I'm going to start doing it once a week. They asked if I would consider doing a, uh, a reading buddy, is what they call it. But it was just absolutely fulfilling. I would have stayed, you know, another hour, uh, just a great class. So I thoroughly enjoyed it, and thank you to our clerk for contacting me to see if I would be interested in it. Very fulfilling.
Thank you. Sounds like he's encouraging the rest of us to step up.
They corrected me on a couple of words I said wrong.
Uh, Commissioner Griffin, you got anything?
Uh, the only thing is, uh, I too went to the, uh, Veterans Appreciation at South Graham on Saturday, and I was very happy with the number of turnout of people that came to show support for our veterans that have given so many, so, give so much so that so many of us could live in this country and have the freedoms that we enjoy. Uh, also today, some of us went over to South Graham and, uh, looked at a ribbon cutting ceremony for the new concession stand they have down at the girls' softball field. If you get a chance, go by there, look at the ballgame. They, they sell hot dogs and things in there. It's a really nice building. They put a lot of money into it, and it's going to be something that's going to serve our students in our county for many years to come. That, that's about the only thing I have to say. Thank you.
And it's warm in that building too.
It is nice and warm in that building too.
Yes. Uh, one of us was late for that. Sorry. Uh, Commissioner Kozar.
Just briefly, so happy to see that the anti-outfire department is aggressively working on their fundraiser in light of some of this conversation. It's good to see that those kind of things are still going on. And even though I couldn't make it Saturday, I really appreciate our veterans. I appreciate all the work that go into that. It's, I think it's the first one I missed, but, um, really, uh, just want to express my gratitude to them and that whole committee. Uh, Commissioner May, you are a liaison, the great work they do every year. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Commissioner Kozar. Commissioner May?
Yes, before I get into my comments, uh, I'd like to make a nomination if I could, Mister Chair. Commissioner Karen, um, for District Six would like to nominate a, and, and, and I will be doing so on his behalf, uh, for the hospital board, a Jacob Rogers, uh, to the hospital board.
I will second that.
Has he actually resigned from the hospital board?
Yes, Commissioner Karen did, did issue, uh, a statement to the board members that he has, is, is resigning.
As long as the office is vacant.
So let me, let me go back to that. Um, Commissioner Karen has announced that he is resigning from that board. And based upon that, uh, I'm making this, uh, recommendation. I think the county, uh, county chair is aware of the same information I'm aware of.
Okay. Based on the county attorney's advice that the office is vacant, I will second the nomination.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, eyes have it, motion carries. And, uh, you, uh, you have the comments.
Sure, thank you, and thank you for that. Uh, yes, thanks for all the commissioners coming to the veterans, uh, event. It is truly incredible, uh, with the, uh, the number of Vietnam veterans we had, and, uh, thank you for coming. Uh, again, thank you also for supporting the Veterans Affairs Committee. Uh, they do outstanding work for the county. We have over, uh, three thousand veterans in this county, and so, uh, your work is, uh, and very special people. I'd also like just to talk briefly on a, a matter that, uh, is an issue within our community. Is, uh, the concern with PFAS and SEGUASSA. And so I, I talked to Commissioner Gooch about this, our chair, and I just wanted to make sure that the other commissioners are aware, which I think you are, because you've been involved in some of those discussions as well. But for the, for the purposes of letting the public know, what the, the board had committed, our, 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 our board has been doing is, is that we actually met with, uh, Brad Knott, Congress of Knott's office, and met with him over in, uh, at a business in Raleigh. And met with him, discussed him, the issues. I've met with also his, uh, office, uh, chief of staff. Provided them additional information as well as to what SEGUASSA is moving forward with and their concerns. And of course, with all these conversations, it's a caveat with, how can you help us and how can you help fund this, this matter that SEGUASSA is working on? We've also, um, had discussions, our office, as we did, I think, maybe two weeks ago, or a week and a half ago, with Senator Bud's office. In which this board met, discussed a number of topics, to include SEGUASSA funding, our concerns about PFAS uniqueness of, uh, SEGUASSA in our county setting. Uh, and in regards to, as you're under, as you understand, that this board does not provide any, uh, or this, the county does not provide any funding to SEGUASSA. But we have commissioners sit on that board, and in fact, these residents that, uh, on the municipal systems are actually, um, uh, part of our constituents. And so we are working behalf of that. We also, uh, there was also a discussion, um, last week with Senator Tillis's office, in which similar information was passed forward to him as well. Again, there was a conversation with DEQ regarding, uh, the concerns that we had and, uh, what, and what we were doing in regards to, um, trying to get funding and relief, and are we on the track, are we on the right track or not right track for SEGUASSA? In addition, there were some communications or, uh, there was some conversation with, uh, surrounding water systems to see what they are doing and what, and what we are doing to see that, to determine whether or not, uh, our SEGUASSA is moving in the direction that we'd like to, that we think would be best suited. And again, I'm, I'm no expert, uh, but then that was all discussed with, uh, Chairman Gooch, who was also the chairman of the SEGUASSA board. So I think from a perspective of, uh, we're listening, we're hearing, we hear the complaint, uh, complaining, we hear it, we heard the concerns. Uh, they're not being ignored. Um, we, also, also there was a conversation with Representative Khan, uh, in regards to funding. And, and also representatives outside of the county that, uh, we're seeking assistance from. So there's robust conversation going on to include a, a conversation that will occur tomorrow. That hopefully we can see if we can, uh, continue the progress that we're making with the PFAS situation. Again, this is a fast, it's a fluid issue, uh, an issue that, uh, that people are concerned about, and an issue that we're concerned about and not ignoring. But we're doing our due diligence to make sure we're, uh, aiding and seeking the right funding and matters that we can, the best we can as a county board. That's, uh, one last thing, the Fire Commission, I do encourage you, if you come tomorrow night, it's, uh, they, I think any way we can help and guide them, your comments back to county manager would be very helpful, uh, so that we can make sure that, uh, we have the right funding in the right areas as the, as the, as the Fire Commission has to make these decisions and send the recommendations to us. So any guidance you're willing to provide, me as well, I'm glad to share with them. So thank you.
Chairman Gooch, before you start your comments, if I can ask a question. When we go back to, um, the nomination that, uh, Chairman, I mean, that Commissioner May made, and I second it. Now, we, that would be a non-voting, so we have, uh, Commissioner Griffin that is also serving on the hospital board. It, I mean, so, so how, how are we going to do the, or how, or the voting, non-voting, how would that work?
Yeah, Commissioner Griffin is currently a non-voting member on the board. We would have to appoint Commissioner Griffin to the non-voting slot. And the person we just appointed, we would have to appoint them, I mean, we had to point, we would have to point Commissioner Griffin to the voting spot that Tim has. And then we would have to appoint the, uh, the person that we just nominated to the non-voting position.
So Commissioner Gooch, may I, and, uh, with Mister Mr. Ren's guidance, can we make that amendment now after it's been passed?
You won't, uh, it will be four, because you're losing a commissioner, but Tim stepping down, he's a commissioner. You're losing him, and you're moving Mark from non-voting to voting. You keep the exact same number of commissioners in voting slots.
So we've got currently, we've got in voting slots, we've got you, Dr. Kozar, um, Mister Karen, and who's the, uh, Mister Jay of the four?
That's the four.
And Mister Karen's leaving.
That will put you at three. If we put Mister Griffin in as a voting, that will put us back to four.
I would, I'd like to extend my motion. Thank you, county attorney, for the advice. I'd like to extend my motion, Mister Chair, if, if I may at this time, which you're, uh, okay. So what I'd like to do is, is nominate Mister Rogers as a non-voting member, and nominate Mister Griffin as a voting member, who is already serving as an ex officio to the board, which would give... would give us a total of four county commissioners as voting members, and Mr. Rogers would then serve as a non-voting member.
The only thing I would ask is if you all just hold this vote long enough, finish whatever else you would do. Let me pull up the bylaws and make sure there's an ex officio spot for a non-county commissioner. The bylaws, my recollection is a bylaw specify that that ex officio slot is for a county commissioner, but I'll pull it up in two minutes and read it to you.
So I'll hold that, and then we can deal with that after the county attorney has a closed session, I think.
Yeah.
You still haven't made your comments, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah.
I can be quick.
Yeah, we got off balance here. I did, I attended the veterans ceremony at South Grahamville Saturday, and it was, it was very... For me, it was emotional. It was very moving because we were honoring the veterans of the Vietnam War. They were the focus of that. And they're, the Vietnam era veterans are aging out. I mean, I missed it by just a few, just a little bit. I turned, I'm 70. I turned 18 in September of 1972, and they were winding down the war then, and they eventually eliminated the draft. So I never had to serve, and I never volunteered to serve. So the ones that did, they're several years older than me. And over the years, I've come to know a lot of veterans and a lot of stories they had, not stories, but experiences they had while in Vietnam. And I have the utmost respect for them, and they asked me to make some opening remarks, and I kept it very short because I just, I'm in awe. I wasn't, in my mind, I hadn't earned the right to be there to speak to them. They were the heroes. They were the ones that paid the price, them and the comrades. And it was, it was a very good ceremony, and I really, I enjoyed it, but I was still a little bit in awe of them because I remember what these guys had to go through. And with that, I'll just keep my remarks short. I'm sure Jim's still working here.
I think I've got an answer, but I'm still counting up. It says here that in addition to Grahamville Health's pursuit of the resolution, there should be nine voting members of the Board of Trustees, all of whom shall be appointed by the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners. In addition, the Grahamville Health System CEO, Medical Chief of Staff, and one county commissioner appointed by the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners shall serve in an ex officio capacity without voting rights of the nine members selected by the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners, and is recommended that one member of the active medical staff shall be chosen, that one member shall be chosen from the active medical staff. So currently, I've got Mr. Jay, Mr. Gooch, Mr. Kozar, Mr. Karen, Mr. Smith, Mr. Lumpkins, and then we've got, help me out on the, we've got Dr. Kumora Blue. Or Doctor, not... No, she's not a... Dawn Marie. And who's the, who's the ninth one? Maybe Dr. Hodge, I'm not... So that you've got that in front of you? Can you just confirm that for me, please?
For the non-voting?
No, for the non-voting members.
Okay, District One, Zodis Jay. Do you have James Lumpkin?
I do.
David Smith?
I do.
James Cyril Blaine?
He's no longer on there.
Oh, that was reapweed.
So Mr. Gooch replaced Mr. Blaine?
And then Dawn Omakunde, Dr. Kozar, Bobby Wheeler, and...
Oh, Bobby Wheeler, okay.
And then Tim Karen.
And who was the doctor on there?
No, I just said Doc... Oh, Dr. Alvin Abraham.
Abraham, that's right, okay.
He's ex officio.
I'm sorry, no Doc.
And the hospital staff representative is Dr. Hodge.
Okay. So Hodge is on there. So right now, we don't have a, the way I understand that, the county commissioner seat that is being filled as ex officio has to be a county commissioner seat. It's not a, there's not an opening. So, you know, I think you've got a couple of options. One, you could appoint a county commissioner to fill that seat, and then appoint another county commissioner to serve ex officio. Since that's in a non-voting role, I don't think that would be a problem as far as attack status issues that we're concerned about. So I believe you could appoint Mr. Griffin to just to serve as a voting member, and then appoint another commissioner to serve ex officio.
Then we couldn't appoint the one that Tim recommended.
That's correct.
You could or could not.
Could not.
At all, for any type.
Not right now, because there's not an opening, if you went that route. If you went that route, if you...
The only choices would be Commissioner May.
To serve an ex officio.
We have something coming up this year for reappointment. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of who's coming up this year.
I think, I think, Mr. Gooch, Mr. Ren, I'm just gonna withdraw what I was just getting ready to state, and Mr. Karen, that's his nomination, and the board has made that determination. And unless there's any other way to do this, I don't want to... That's what, that was, Commissioner Karen is not here tonight, but that was his request.
Okay, based on the attorney's recommendation, well, the attorney's interpretation of the bylaws, we can't offer that amendment.
Well, I think, I think, I think, well, one of you could volunteer to serve as ex officio, but the issue is if you want Mr. Karen's nominee or a person he asked somebody here to nominate, since he's not here, to serve, then I can't make another slot for a voting county commissioner here because...
Okay.
I mean, I think you could, I think you've got two options. One is to allow the motion to stand, the other one would be to rescind the motion and consider it when, after everybody's had a chance to talk about it, but that's entirely up to the board. And again, I don't think this is my interpretation. I think, I just want to read you the language again. It says, in addition to the Grahamville Health System CEO, Medical Chief of Staff, and one county commissioner appointed by the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners, she'll serve in an ex officio capacity without voting rights of the nine members selected by the Grahamville County Board of Commissioners, is recommended that one member shall be chosen from the active medical staff. So you've got nine voting positions, and that other county commissioner position is a non-voting position.
Okay. Could we, could we appoint a commissioner as an ex officio above and beyond what we already have?
I don't think that's in the bylaws. I think a commissioner could come to all the meetings and sit in on them at all times, but I don't, I don't see that. We could probably go back and adopt something different at a later date. But I think the question is, can you appoint somebody else as a voting member? And I, I think there are probably simpler ways to solve this, and we don't, and not try to...
Rush it tonight.
Rush it tonight, yeah.
I'd like to just offer a suggestion that we wait for Commissioner Karen to come back. I'm gonna make a motion that I ask Commissioner May to rescind his motion, and we table it until we've had a chance to talk about it, and let our county attorney look into it further, and Commissioner Karen be involved in the conversation.
I agree, and I accept that if there's a second.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, to rescind the nomination. Is there any discussion on this?
I just want to make it clear, though, to this citizen that has been nominated, that to make sure there's ample communication regarding that, and that this is not a matter of rejection, but more of, more of the board doing additional due diligence.
Yes. Yes, this is, this is by no mean, by no means is this, as far as I'm concerned, reflect on the person nominated. I think it was a great choice, but it just kinda threw us into a situation where we're gonna have one less commissioner on that board that can vote. And based on the bylaws, it's kinda got us, it's got us in a bit of a corner here, so.
That's also the resolution creating the Board of Trustees, I believe, also has similar language, just to be clear.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we have a motion to rescind, and we have a second. Is there any question on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor of rescinding the nomination, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Eyes have it. Nomination is rescinded. We will resubmit. We will talk with Commissioner Karen, and we will revisit this matter at our next meeting. Thank you. All right, is there any other matters to come before us tonight?
Yes, Chairman, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention it in my report. I met with Krista Simmons from Congress of Knott's office last week on railroad, and she was talking about railroads coming into Oxford and everything, but I told her, I didn't know only railroad I had that I knew anything about to come in. I think came, I think a train come into Certain T. And I think she had talked with the mayor about that one, and I told her about Butler. I knew the one that comes right there from the ABC stuff. I know the track, I know the railroad, a train track go through in there. And I mentioned, and I mentioned your name, Mr. Chairman, and the mayor, for her to get in touch with you. Mayor, she said it's a lot of grants out there for help with railroad tracks and everything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And one other matter I'd like to revisit before we go into closed session. I know, Commissioner May, you've been doing a lot of research and talking to a lot of people about the PFAS issue, and I believe you had conversation with section head chief at DEQ. Would you like to elaborate, elaborate on that? I'm sorry.
Yes, I spoke with, I think his name is Eric Hudson. We discussed my, which I made it clear to him that I was no expert, not a member of the Seguasa Board, but he made it very clear to me that they have had done some testing in the Creedmore area, based on customers not having concerns regarding their water, and it was within limits, and it was, the testing they did, it was clear and odorless. And that's what he said, okay? And so he also made the comment that, that I told him about the progress that was being made by Seguasa and the timeline that Seguasa had, and his comments were pretty much that, you know, many, many places are doing politing, politing programs on how to rid the system, using different ways of reading the system of PFAS. And so he was somewhat understood what we were doing, and pretty much had, did not provide any negative feedback in regards to how Seguasa was going about this, and nor that would provide any further guidance other than what was, what he knows about what they're doing. So he understood why Seguasa was doing what they did, and he also stated the value of having politing programs on how to deal with PFAS so that the right decisions would be made in regards to how to best rid the system of PFAS.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come before us tonight? If not, we entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'm moved we go into closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do we hear a second? Have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. We will go into closed session, and when we come back, we'll adjourn.